Lord, we're coming for you this evening, oh God. Just want to thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for your goodness and all your mercy, oh God. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon. We give you glory because you've been so good and you've been so kind. So, Lord, I need you to saturate this place with your presence, oh God. Bless our man, oh God, word out of mouth, oh God. Let us make good, sound decisions, oh God, in these meetings, oh God. Lord, you be our governor, oh God. You be our speaker, oh God. Lift us up, oh God. Give us that love that run from heart to heart and breast to breast, oh God. Connect us, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus. We bless your name this evening, oh God. Lord, let each one be respected for one another, oh God. And, Lord, we thank you, Lord, because you've been so good and you've been so kind. You are the reason for the season as we go through these holidays, oh God. And I thank you, Lord, for the council member. I thank you for our mayor, God. Most of all, I thank you for our city of West Memphis, oh God, because we want to go forward. And we bless your name in this place, oh God. We give you glory. We give you honor. And we give you praise, because it's in your name, oh God, that we live and move and have our being. And we thank you right now. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty and justice for all.
Did y'all win the championship or something? Why I ain't know about this? So, y'all just hold on a minute. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Mr. Clever, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Counselor Kat?
Here.
Counselor Crune?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Holt?
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Here.
Counselor Muhammad? Counselor Willis?
Here.
Counselor Monday? Counselor Murray?
Here.
Counselor Pulliam?
Here.
And Counselor Willis.
Counselor Monday called and said he would not be in due to illness. We have a corn.
Okay, I'm sorry. City Attorney Stevenson, sorry. Mayor McClendon?
Present.
And City Treasurer Frank Martin.
He was here but he left. With the corn being present, I call this meeting to order. Was there a correction to the first set of meetings we talked about in pre-council?
Make a motion to approve the December 5th and December 6th minutes.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? We have a second reading for old business, my city attorney.
Second reading of an ordinance to amend the Personnel Manual of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas regarding vacation and sick leave benefits and for other purposes.
Hearing that for the second time, we're reading in two weeks for a vote. Mr. Counselor, report him.
Make a motion, read R. 1, R. 2, O. 1, O. 2, by Tyler.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? Also, did you want to add the budget?
Yeah, it was.
Or?
It would be R. 3.
R. 3, okay. We can go ahead and make a motion to add R. 3 as well. So moved by Tyler.
Second. Do I get a second?
Yep.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? Is added. City attorney.
R. 1 is a resolution by the City of West Memphis supporting the House Joint Resolution 1018 of 2019, also known as HJR 1018 of 2019, proposing an amendment to the Arkansas Constitution to continue a levy of one-half percent sales and use tax for state highways and bridges, county roads, bridges, and other surface transportation, and city streets, bridges, and other surface transportation after the retirement of the bonds authorized in Arkansas Constitution Amendment 91 as special revenue to be distributed under the Arkansas Highway Revenue Distribution Law.
I'll give the motion in a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I ask, what's the length of this? I think the last one we had was 20 years. They've had that. And that's why, that's why we're putting it back out and approving it again, was because it runs out next year.
Well, what's going to happen in the general election is going to come up. And what it is, at that time, I guess, when they put the referendum back on, it's continuation. And, you know, to continue this taxes already, you know, that was already put on. That's what it is. And so, the length of it, they didn't ever discuss the length of it with us. Actually, this was passed out at one of the state public safety meeting that we had in Little Rock. And the municipal league is asking all of us to, you know, support this with a resolution. So, the continuation, you know, basically, that's what they come up. So, I guess, when they get ready to put it on the ballot, then, I guess, you know, the language will be in it, then, as to the extent.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Mr. Clever, would you give that resolution a number?
Yes, that would be Resolution 2213.
That's 2213. City attorney, R. 2.
All right. R. 2 is a resolution administering the recording of public meetings for the City of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Can I give the motion in a second to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed? It passes as well. R. 2, city clerk.
That would be Resolution 2214.
R. 3 is the resolution that we answer the agenda?
Yes, sir, clerk.
R. 3 is a resolution to approve and adopt a temporary budget for the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Excuse me. We voted to add it. Now, can you?
Yeah, I did it all in one motion to add and to read by Tyler.
Motion, second to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
One thing, okay, that's going to be 1/12, right?
1/12.
1/12 of the 2019, as it was amended throughout the year.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Mr. Clever, now you can give the resolution.
Resolution number 2215.
City attorney, O. 1.
O. 1 is an ordinance that creates a grant researcher/rider position for the City of West Memphis within the economic development and for other purposes.
It's on its first reading. It'll be back in two weeks. O. 2.
Mr. Mayor, could I say something about that last O. 1 ordinance we just read?
Yes, sir.
I would, I would like to see the language change just a tad, where it talks about the grant writer and researcher that can be hired as an employee or contractor with a salary, not to exceed $60,000. I would like to see it somehow written up so that the contractor is on a retainer. And he's, they're only called, we only call them in to write a grant instead of having to pay a $60,000 salary. I'm just asking for some verbiage change.
Let me pull that ordinance.
It's just for the first reading right now.
Yeah.
Do you need the information now? You want to discuss it further in the work session?
Well, I just wanted to know what the council thinks about it. I just, I would like to see the wording.
I know in the verbiage of the ordinance, it has employee or contractor.
Right. It does say, "or contractor."
Yeah, it do have contractor.
But I would like to have it say something in the neighborhood of, or a contractor that's on a retainer for the city. That way, you pay them a monthly fee and you only use them when you need them.
Well, I think what the idea behind this.
Well, I think the one thing, I mean, reading it, and the amendments and motion can come. I'm just saying on the third reading.
Okay.
And I think the idea of it was not so much just sending around waiting on someone to just write a grant for, I think they would be writing the grants for all the police, the fire department, any other grants that come over, anything they may find that they can bring to the table that can be beneficial for the City of West Memphis. You know, it's going to some of these meetings, we learning that we missing out on a lot of potential funding out there because we don't have no one else looking for it.
Yeah, I'm all in agreement with a, with a grant writer. I just want to go the less expensive way, I guess you'd say.
Okay. Well, this is on its first reading, so we are discussing.
Of course, we'll have to bring it up during budget meeting, so we can add it to the 2020 budget, so we'll discuss it in detail.
Okay, O. 2, city attorney.
All right. O. 2 is an ordinance adopting a rental property ordinance for the City of West Memphis in order to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Hearing that for the first time, it'll be back on the second reading. Permission request? I need permission request to sign an offer between the city and P and A G Beth.
So moved.
Any discussion?
You may have our attorney to explain to the audience what this is.
The city was approached by an individual who has a limited liability company that owns property. The individual wanted to donate property to the city. All he wanted the city to do was pay the closing cost of the transaction and the taxes for the 2019 year. Ordinarily, the city would not pay taxes on property that's used for public purposes, but this property was not for 2019. But it comes to a approximate total of about $3,500 that we would pay and have the property donated to the city at that cost. It's a property, I think the address is 203 South Avalon, is formerly a Dennis Building. It's a two-story building, has about, close to 4,000 square feet in it. It's in pretty good shape. We've seen it, looked at it, had it inspected. All the plumbing is in good shape. And that's what is being requested, that the mayor can sign the offer to accept the gift, basically.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Permission request? To sign an agreement between Moller Road Solutions?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? Committee request?
We.
You want to do that in?
I don't know if I need to do it in committee or if it just need added to the agenda and give you permission to determine which one you want to do.
I think you can do it in the committee.
Would it be a question?
Added? He's done it this way in the past to, in the committees.
Counselor McHolt, the thing from the park?
No.
No, Counselor McCone referred to next council meeting.
Yeah, we had, we had our airport commission meeting this morning, but I won't have the summary until later in the week, which I'll report on next meeting.
Okay. Counselor, what would you say?
Yes, Mayor. Personnel committee met on December the 11th. We discussed open enrollment, the continued conversation on our sick leave policy, and also electing new representatives for, for the upcoming year. It concluded with open discussion and announcements, and that pretty much was our, our meeting. Thank you.
Counselor McK?
Yes, Fire Commission met on December the 10th. I was absent. Mr. Willis chaired the meeting. Ms. Harris and Ms. Hutchinson were also there since the chief fire, Dwayne Rose. Meeting was turned over to Chief Rose. Committee was informed that all of the turnouts that had been ordered, which I believe were 12, have come in. Everything is, as ordered was, as supposed to be. Then shortly after that, the meeting was adjourned. The one item that has come up since that meeting, and I handed this out in pre-council, we have basically four ambulances. Two that we run every day. Third is backup, and the fourth is needed to be dealt with a long, long time ago. The third ambulance, again, as a backup, is not used routinely, but it's becoming more and more of a necessity. And in order to get that ambulance 100% in compliance with what we do here, there's $47,097.08 worth of equipment that needs to be added to that ambulance. If the council would go ahead and grant this, we can go ahead and get it ordered before the end of the year, make sure there's no price increases. Also, if the council approves the appreciation account for the general fund in the 2020 budget, a new ambulance will be ordered. And once it's here, this equipment will simply be transferred to the new, and this ambulance will go back into reserve status as a third and backup to be used in emergency situations. If the department finds that we continually have to have a third ambulance at all times, then it's just a matter of some equipment issues that we'll have to bring back to you. Should have a better handle on that, I'd say, at the end of the first quarter.
I think this equipment is going to bring that third unit up to a primary standard.
But, once you get the new one in, if we find it running three continuously, we will need to buy this equipment again.
We will not.
Will not? Okay.
Let me ask a question, Assistant Chief. Is there a standard on how many ambulances a metropolitan area should have, like a per capita number? Like, you should have one ambulance for 10,000 people?
If, if I may, Chief, if you please come to the mic.
Yeah. I was just, I was just wondering if there's a set standard for the number of ambulances a city should have depending on their size.
Yes, sir. I'm sure that there is data out there that will support those, but I think that you probably going to base it more off run volume than you will citizens. And right now, we are, we have three private ambulances service here in Creighton County. And between the fire department and those three private services, there are a lot of days that we still can't keep up. There's a lot of days where engine companies will set idle at a residence and wait on a unit to become available. And then those units get there. So, our goal with that third unit is to, to quit turning over so many runs to private analysis and continue to, you know, keep those run, that run volume here in the city.
Of course, like I say, trying to compare apples to apples would be difficult. I mean, you have to look at other communities that are located next to an MSA with two major interstates running through it.
Sure.
We have a lot more need.
That's right.
Than, say, another 26,000 population community would have. We're very unique.
The goal with this equipment that we're asking for today is, you know, we're running that third unit pretty regularly, you know, versus the two that we've always historically ran. This, this equipment sends that data to the hospital, and it, you know, we're providing that service when Unit 14 and Unit 15 are going, but when Unit 13's dispatched on a run, they don't have that equipment. So, it's kind of the luck of the draw. If that, if that residence gets Unit 13, you don't get the same level of care that you got with those other two units, because we don't have that updated equipment on it.
So, currently, we have four ambulances?
We run in three.
We run in three, but do you have?
We have a fourth one.
You're going to order a new one, and you're going to put one in the?
Where we would put that up on the, you know, the government grants, I guess, or the government.
The current ambulance, fourth ambulance we have now would be permanently retired. It's, no longer has any great value.
It's a backup to the backup, if you will. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Second. Is that a motion?
Make a motion, yes, sir.
Second. All in favor, aye? Opposed?
Thank you. Budget committee has been meeting. We will meet again. We're going to try to figure out one day next week. We've gone, met with each department head, and now the council will be bringing back particular departments that you want to visit with. We still need to sit down and have a conversation about the appreciation fund that you're wanting to set up for 2020. We need to meet with Frank on the budget projections for the revenue stream. Kind of need to find out when construction's going to start, so we can try to figure out when, when all this is going, in 2020 is going to start actually coming to reality. But saying that, the appreciation fund and using that funding source, we just want to make sure those numbers are right and make sure that you have accurate data before you make that final decision. But I think you'll, I think the number's going to work well when we get this set up, and you will be able to fund your capital outlays in the future much more consistently. You won't have to worry about departments running equipment like a fire engine that's 61 years old. We will, you know, just won't be in that position again, or an employee wanting to go to a meeting in Little Rock, and we're trying to figure out which car we're going to put them in that's reliable. So, this way, we can keep the inventory rolled. You can also get rid of what still has some value to it, not just work completely out, so.
So, how much we have on the depreciation fund? I know you said it for the second.
The 2020 projected is approximately 1.9 million. When we originally met last year.
For the 12 months.
Yes, sir. We were somewhat projected around 1.3. And we've had some additional requests from staff, department heads, and we will be bringing those individuals back to you and say, "is this truly a necessity?"
Of course. So, we're one of the, I know they was talking about the five police vehicles. Will they be actually the first five? Will they be coming in? Because I know it says possibility of the second five, but first five be?
Yeah, we'll need to meet with the police department and find out if they receive these five today, do they need to go ahead and order five more right now, or can they wait till June, July, September? That's the reason we need to visit with each one that's within the general fund and just make sure that their needs are being taken care of, but make sure it's still within the monetary constraints that you do have.
So, the balance in the depreciation fund this time is?
Zero, because there never was one before.
We never did set them.
Not for the general fund.
As of today, it's zero. We never, we never set up.
There's never been a appreciation, the council in the years past had always set one up for depreciation street utilities. But, the general fund has been one of those that's, well, we just keep buying it as we can afford it. But, with the restructuring of your income stream, you finally have an opportunity to permanently fund it. That was always your problem in the past, is you didn't have a source that you could rely on. I believe this source is reliable, but me, I'm always a little, you know, I'd rather have one in hand and two in the bush. So, whatever we're doing, yes, we'd be like to pay for it as soon as possible to make sure we keep the city debt-free as, as much as humanly possible.
Does he report?
Yes, sir.
Counselor, report him, A and P.
Well, actually, the utilities, of course, I passed out a report, but, of course, today it's going to be a little something special. I'm going to ask Mr. Todd Peterson to come up to the front. One of the things that I would like to say as well is, you know, for anyone out there that's looking for employment, the utility have nine position open. So, if anyone out there looking for you, employment, they got nine position. And the reason I called Mr. Peterson up, actually, because the Arkansas Department of Health.
I didn't want to block you.
No, 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 I'm good.
Turn the vest around.
I'm good. Well, what it is, we received a presentation from, well, an award from the Arkansas Department of Health for water fluoridation quality. So, and I'd just like for him to expand on that a little bit.
Okay. I was wondering which one you're, it was the Arkansas Department of Health or the other one? Well, this is a good one. We actually received an award from the Arkansas Department of Health for, we add fluoride to our water to help with dental purposes. And we received an award for the year 2018 for maintaining that within the tolerances that they require for the whole month. And I can tell you, I've been with the utility since 2002, and we have never done this before. So, I gave gratitude to the person who is responsible for that on a daily basis. His name is Andrew Bass. He is our wastewater treatment operator. And, I mean, he does a great job, and that's his sole responsibility, is making sure that the water that is leaving our facility is adequately chlorinated and has the proper amount of fluoride, and maintaining that water treatment system, you know. I always kid him, and I'm down there, I ask questions about him sometimes. His response is, "Todd, remember, my mama lives in this town, so don't worry. I'm going to make sure the water is good." So, again, it was a good award, and I, you know, it's a very hard task to attain, I can tell you, because I've been down there many times, and you, it's a very fine-tuned system, because you're adding that in bulk. So, again.
That's, that's the end of the report on the utilities. So, the next would be the A and P. Actually, the only thing, I got the report on the A and P, when you look at our numbers year-to-date, we've had like 6,840 to come through the auditorium, and we've had like 7,823 to come through our civic center. So, those numbers are up, and I hope we continue to keep moving forward with it. And one other thing, of course, you know, I would like, you know, for this body, actually, Mr. Willis, Counselor Monday and myself, we both serve on the U.T., on the A and P Commission, and we would like to continue to serve, as y'all will. So, I mean, again, you know, it is something, yeah, I would like to see put in form a motion, you know. We would like to continue to serve the A and P.
Do you know when you'll make your 2020 appointments?
By the next council meeting.
Okay.
So, how are they doing, the next council meeting?
Well, actually, actually, the A and P Commission, actually, that's at will of the city council. It's at will of the city council.
Is it at, it's even?
It's at will of the city council.
Because I got it down as to the mayor's appointment. I got on it.
Oh, well, you probably have it, but.
We'll red double check and then come back. Mr. Willis?
Yes, sir. The West Memphis Chamber met on the 11th of December. The welcome and introductions and the call of order was by Councilman Crune. Councilman Crune announced the new board members for the coming New Year. The new members will take place of the exiting members that served in the 2019 year. I want to remind everyone that the chamber banquet will be on February the 20th at the Eugene Woods Civic Center. Philip Sorrell and Mallory Darby are still working to bring food establishments to West Memphis. That was mentioned at the lunch. Also, Temple Inland has been sold and is being utilized as a warehouse for storage right now. And at that time, I think this was the first announcement of the, of the vote totals that day, was the votes for the parks and Tilden Rogers passed 202 for and 42 against. And it was a good, good meeting. I enjoyed the year being there.
Counselor woman Harris? Counselor Murray?
Nothing.
We had no appointments. I had no presentations, announcements. Once again, I'd like to thank the citizens of West Memphis for their vote with the parks and recreation. I think there's going to be definitely a great thing for our city parks as well. We had no citizen request, but I did see a young man walk in with Cory. Will you come to the mic, Cory? Maurice? Seeing the young man, they got, they got their trophies on, assuming. They've been very successful here, so can you kind of give us some details of what's going on?
Well, I can tell you, these gentlemen, West Memphis Jaguars, I'm Maurice Crawford, by the way, this is Cora Southern. We coaching the West Memphis Jaguars here. These young men this year, they won the Super Bowl in their league, I-10U, 8U. And then we went to Little Rock. They played in Arkansas State Championships. It was 6-14.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I-10U, 8U came out on top, first place. So, it's a big deal.
Yeah, man, you want to say something? You all want to say something?
Well, basically, we just want to say that we are independent and that, and that we're down at Franklin Park, and we just need help with the park, with the team and the other events that we have. We have T-ball and coaches pitch softball, baseball, and we also want to do football. But, you know, we need help down there, so that's how we just.
And we do have a concern about the park on 25th Street. We see that we're going to get a baseball field and splash pad. And we wanted to know was any kind of way that we could do football as well. Because football been going on on 25th Street for over 20 years, and I've just been doing it the last team. And he was before me. And we got.
Have our athletes play for the high school? Have our athletes play for the high school.
Yeah, and, and we even have, uh, Jarvis Cooper went to Memphis. Uh, all those guys come from Twenty-Fifth Street, even the kids you see now at West Memphis, uh, they start with us, but we just have a concern about that. We, we, we want to keep football down on Twenty-Fifth Street, and, uh, if there's anything, you know, you guys could do, we would like to have a football field down there with a baseball field.
Can you tell them about your plan? I mean, don't that include some of that down there? Well, the plan was true, was, uh, to have a multi-use for the field. That has always been, uh, I kind of wish that, uh, when I first went down, I talked with both directors, uh, Mr. Hayes and Ms. Anthony, and expressed what they wanted there, and I, I hadn't heard nothing from you guys, and, you know, simply I was like, you had to do what this called me, because you both got my number, but I think that we both can work that out with the plans, to make a, uh, multi-use field.
Thank you.
Well, we've been kind of busy traveling, because, you know, we do travel, you know, we don't have any teams around.
Well, one thing, one thing I can say for sure, they actually work with those young men. They act, they actually work with those young men, because they're busy every day.
And the reason too, at the time, uh, we didn't know that they was gonna build west on Friendship Field. We had somewhere to play, things was going, but now they're gonna build a school there. We're not gonna have anywhere to play, so.